I'd like to call the order Board of Education, study session, November 4th, 6 o'clock. Lisa, take attendance.
All board members are present except for trustee Van Ooyen.
Thank you. And just before we go to the study session, I want to again, you know, last night was election night, I want to congratulate all the people who ran for the school board position, you know, and investing all the time over the last several months. Just congratulate everyone who ran and also congratulations to the three people, John, Diva, and Michelle, who were elected to be on our school board. So I want to congratulate them. And again, everyone who ran for the school board and invested the time to give back to their community. With that, I will hand it over to Pat Watson for a COVID-19 update.
All right. Thank you, President Colin. Right. So kind of like we've been doing for a while now, every two weeks, we'll have our traditional COVID update. We've added a few additional slides just to provide, you know, some additional information for the community. So we'll go ahead and get going with that, David, if you can skip to, all right, so the COVID update, one more slide. So this isn't going to come as a surprise to anyone, but when we look at the Oakland County trends, we can see as far as total confirmed cases by day, they track the 14-day average for case count, death count, test per day, they've all increased. And also, we look at the age groups, whether it's zero to four, five to nine, 10 to 13, 14 to 18, 19 to 29, so on and so forth, that the data in Oakland County not only matches what we're seeing in the tri-county area, tri-county area, but what we're seeing out of state and nationally as well. Next slide. So one thing I do want to touch on, as we know, we're continually using two different key metrics, even though, you know, it's multi-factorial. One is the case rate, and we've talked about that before, but I also want to talk about the positivity rate as far as what that looks like and what we're looking at. So it wasn't really clear when we reflected on the 8/20 meeting as far as how we were looking at that. So we made it clear that we were looking at a seven-day moving average with a three-day lag for the case rate. That's also what we're going to be looking at for the test positive rate. A couple of reasons for that. One, it's absolutely consistent with the way that we track the case rate. Also accounts for a decision the state of Michigan made a while back, which was in September, where the state of Michigan decided that it would no longer report COVID-19 data on Sunday. Therefore, those numbers would roll into your Monday, your Tuesday total data drops. And so we want to make sure that we're accounting for that. Also, it's a more accurate representation since there's a lack of consistency in the data. For example, if you go on the website or MI.gov, you'll see on 10/29, when they went to pull the data, there was a technical difficulty. Therefore, they couldn't pull it until the next day. So those numbers that could have been reported on 10/29 could not be reported until a later date. So if you look at the two different lines, the blue line is going to be the test positive rate for that day, and you can see how it fluctuates. And then if you look at the seven-day moving average, it gives you a more accurate description of what's going on for that timeframe. Next slide, David. Also, when you look at October 16th, and a lot of times I talk about the October 8th board meeting and where we were and just how different it continues to change, you can see October 16th in the United States, where we were case-wise, we're a little over 50,000 as far as daily confirmed COVID-19 cases, looking at a rolling seven-day average. Now we're well over 80,000 and approaching 90,000 cases daily. How's that compare nationally? You can see India's drop, but you can see France has gone up. You can see the United Kingdom has gone up. And you can see Germany's gone up as well. But all that pales in comparison to where we're at as a country. Again, this is nothing new. I know everyone's watching the news on the election and other things, and COVID is continually one of the stories. We all know that numbers are increasing. Next slide. So as you can see, the dashboard, and we took this from a couple of days ago, the numbers for the case rate continue to go up. As far as percent positive, that continues to rise up again. Again, nothing new, but information we've talked about before. And I know there's been some additional questions about data and data sources, so we're going to talk about that a little bit. Next slide, David. So there are many different sources to choose from for our compiled data, which is related to COVID-19. These are just a few examples that are out there. There is Johns Hopkins University. There's the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. There's New York Times, which feeds into COVID Act Now. There's the State of Michigan, and there are many other data sources as well. Next slide. So we've been working with Munetrix, and we've been doing this for a while. So Munetrix uses data from the state of Michigan, Ronan Byers website. There's a couple of reasons that they've shared with us. One, not every dashboard that is available online provides full data files to be used by the public. The state of Michigan offers consistent and updated data that is easy for normalization, batch uploading, making Munetrix charts updates quick and easy. Also, the state of Michigan would be a more direct source to those reporting the data initially than others, such as the CDC or another source. Michigan data was the focus, obviously, we're in Michigan, so that was the data we're focused on as far as school decision. So sources providing additional data for the entire U.S. worldwide did not necessarily have added use. So, next slide. So sources for the Munetrix dashboard. So there are several different data sets that are on the MI.gov website. So Munetrix is pulling from daily cases. So you can see the public tab to the right. You can pull cases and death by county, cases and death by, you know, date of onset, case by demographics. Also, the top bar is the current status, daily cases, the trends, demographics, total testing, diagnostic testing, and a tab for learn more. Munetrix pulls from the daily cases. Just kind of as a side note as well, that Munetrix, as far as pulling from the daily cases, that is where the state of Michigan pulls from on their dashboard. So if you go on the dashboard for Michigan.gov, that is where the public, if they're looking at the dashboard on the state website, pulls from the daily cases as well. Next slide. Some additional notes that Munetrix shared with us about the data. The state's daily posted tally for confirmed cases means that there was a positive laboratory result, and data was collected for each case. So after the state of Michigan receives this data from the provider, it almost immediately delivers the same data to each county for investigation. The county-level investigations may uncover illness onset dates for the cases that will change the day the case is counted. So sometimes cases will change to an earlier or later date. Munetrix also uses the most updated data reflecting investigations done by the county health department, which can lag the initial counting total by a few days or more. This means a case may have been on the state of Michigan's front-page dashboard on one day, but a county may have discovered the onset date and adjusted it. The reason for this is due to the hierarchy the state of Michigan uses to count cases. Onset date, collect date, referral date. But at Munetrix, the entire database gets refreshed daily, so it is the closest to actual county-wide data available. Also, a disclaimer that Munetrix provides no warranty or guarantee for use of this data, which is covered as part of the provisions of Munetrix. Terms of use, which can be found at munetrix.com. But again, that same database that MI.gov has as far as what they're showing to the public, that was in the slide before, so anyone can go there, click on daily cases, and find that as well. Next slide. So we know all along, we've talked about we're preparing for a couple of things. We're planning for a couple of things. We've been planning forward. What happens if we go to a full return? We've been planning for where we're currently at. What happens if we remain in our current configuration? And we've been planning backward. What happens if we have to pause temporarily and go to distance learning again? So if we enter into red, then all students will transition to fully distance teaching and learning upon Board of Education Direct. So transition to distance learning, all students, with the exception of Bloomer. So what happens? If we hit red, based on the metrics, an emergency board of education is called. Likely, this will be for the next day. Students continue to attend in person as scheduled on this day. The decision, if the Board of Education makes the decision to pause in-person teaching and learning, what happens? It depends on the building. K-8, Seed, and DHH preschool, day one, no school for students. Families collect belongings as needed. Day two, asynchronous learning at home. Day three, distance learning begins. Looking at BHHS, Bowers Prep, day one, distance learning or no school, or continue if already in. As we know, we had to pause in-person at BHHS for, based on the number of staff in quarantine. And so if we were to hit red while BHHS was still paused, then they would continue with the distance learning. Day two, asynchronous learning. Day three, distance learning. IA, IA begins distance learning in day one, continues in day three, day two continues in day three. Wing Lake, day one, no school, students collect belongings as needed. Day two, asynchronous learning at home, the Wednesday schedule. Day three, distance learning begins. Bloomer, day one, two, and three, closed. Just a note at the bottom, Bloomfield virtual classes continue as scheduled. Bloomer will be closed and refunds, oh, sorry, Bloomer will be closed and credits will be issued for days close. DHH, ARP, FRP will follow their assigned building of attendance. Next slide. If we do need to pause, the question I'm going to have, and many people have right away, what does the return to in-person look like? We will continue with the same priorities we had before when it's time to re-enter. Early on, Seed, ARP, FRP, DHH, Bowers, Prep, Wing Lake, and Bloomer will be priority one. Priority two will be grades K through five. Priority three will be grades six through eight. Priority four will be grades nine through 12. Continuing on. So if you've been on the district website, you've noticed that the Bloomfield Hill Schools' real-time COVID-19 data, the bar's been increased and it's been moved up higher, so it's easy to see right away. There's also been some additions and updates to that as far as how the data is displayed. So you'll see that as we go along. But I also want to make sure the community knows because, I want to make sure the community knows exactly what we're sharing. I know everyone knows the letter comes out, you're able to see the letter if you've decided you want to see the letter. But I think it's also important to look at all the details around the dashboard, because some people might want to see it visually as well. So we'll just go through that so everyone's on the same page. Next slide. So the first one is student confirmed and probable cases based on the date that is reported to BHS. And this is as of 11:04 at 12:09 PM, so this was pulled today. It does not reflect the email that came out at 5:00 this afternoon. Next slide, David. So here's one of the updates that was made by communications today, just so you can kind of see, based on the date, how many cases were there and where were the cases? Again, making it more user-friendly so that those people will prefer to go online and see the data.
Did Pat phrase?
He did. Looks like he was there.
Someone want to jump in from Pat's team? Susan or Pat's back?
Yeah, we can't quite hear you yet.
Pat, you're on mute. So again, someone from Pat's team want to jump in?
Paul, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Yep.
All right, great. Next slide, please. Thanks, David. All right. So this one, a student confirmed and probable cases, but we've also broken down by test. Remember, if someone takes the rapid test, the antigen test, it comes across as probable. If it's the PCR test, it comes across as confirmed. So we broke it down as well, so the community can see that. Next slide. So student confirmed and probable cases by school. Again, trying to provide as much transparency and detail for the community. So now you can see it broken down by school. So this will be the probable cases by school. The next slide is going to show probable cases by grade. So not only can you see by school, but you can see by grade as well. And then the next slide is going to be staff confirmed and probable cases by date. The next slide, David, is going to be staff confirmed and probable cases by location. Again, this is updated automatically once we get a new case on the district website. So it's not a matter of making sure someone has to go in. So great job by the communications department to make sure that is seamless. Again, for our community members who want to look at the letter or read the letter, great, they have all that information. Then if they want to go on and say, well, how many cases has there been in the building? And was this a positive PCR test? Was it an antigen test? So it's a probable case. And how many by date, again, by building, they're able to see that information. Next slide. Again, we can't stress enough how important testing is, in that if you don't feel well, please stay home. If your children aren't doing well, please keep them at home so that we can keep the schools open as long as possible. It's important that we continue to work on this. If you need or not sure what to do, this hotline is available, Safe for School hotline. There's no cost. You can call in between 5:00 AM and 8:00 AM, and you can talk to a nurse on duty and just share, here's what's going on with my child today, what do you think, and get some medical advice. Again, I think the best guidance I can give, and I've talked to a couple of people about this today, they're like, well, this happened with my child, Pat. I'm not really sure. If you're not sure, please keep your child home. If you have any doubt in your mind, like, well, I think they're going to be okay, it probably was food poisoning, please keep them home. Next slide. Thank you, David. That is the latest update on COVID-19.
Thanks, Pat. So we'll go around as a board. Mark, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Lisa?
I have one. So Pat, for people that, community members that don't go to the dashboard for information, but get it through the county or Oakland County Health Department, it appears that our numbers are behind, days behind. Can you tell what, can you fill in the blanks for that? What's the reason? Is it true? What's the reason for it?
So all the different data sets have different numbers. And I've reached out to, whether it's been Oakland County Health Department, or tried to figure out as best I can, no one can explain why the different data sites have different numbers. Again, what I can say is the Michigan.gov site and the table we're using, that's exactly the table and data that's shown on the Michigan.gov website when you go on for the community to use. I think it's also important to remind everyone that we've been using this on the Michigan.gov data site for over a couple of months. And so what data's better is what people really wanted to know. What data's more accurate? I don't think anyone honestly has an answer for that. I don't have an answer for that. I can't get an answer from everyone. But what I do know is we've been consistent with our transparency. We've continued to work with Munetrix, who has pulled the data from the site every single time.
Okay, thank you. And I agree, midway through is not the time to change the source of where we get the data. We've been consistent. This is what we've been using all along. But just so that there's an answer for them as to why we're picking it, because we committed to it early on and switching midway, good enough for me.
Well, there's a little bit more to that as well, you know, in talking to Munetrix. There's a couple of reasons this was picked. One, it was recommended by epidemiologists. So going back to September. Two, when you go on the Michigan.gov dashboard and you look at their dashboard, that's also what they're using. That is what they're making transparent for the public to see right away and have easy access to. Again, we can't say one's better, one's worse, one's this, one's that. I don't really know. But we've tried to be as transparent as possible. We were one of the first school districts to actually have a data dashboard up. The dashboard that we're using is now used by districts, you know, throughout the state of Michigan. It's had over 60,000 views so far. And so I know it's frustrating for a lot of people that there's so many different numbers out there. And I wish we could just boil it down to, here's the number that is the most accurate. And I get to frustration with that. But, you know, it's important that, at this point, we stay, in my opinion, we stay consistent with what we've used all along.
Okay. So for people that want to know if the Oakland County Health Department is, granted, everyone's got, every data source, measuring source has their inherent problems as well as benefits. For those who argue that Oakland County Health Department is just flawed and all, days ahead, is it different numbers or is it different timing of when the numbers are available?
That's something, you know, when we had that discussion with Oakland County Health Department before, they referenced vaguely that it was depending on the pull date. There's some other potential suggestions, but I'm not an expert in that area. So I would refer those questions back to Oakland County Health Department, as they are the purveyors of their own data.
Thanks.
Thanks, Lisa. Jennifer?
Yeah, that was my only point of clarification, is that everybody's on the same page as to where the numbers are coming from. You're never going to have full precision with something like this. What bothers me is if it's just a delay in reporting, there just ought to be a right shift of what we're seeing, and that's not exactly what we're seeing when you compare one data set to the other. But honestly, to be fair to OCHD, I don't know that you can ever pinpoint what exactly the discrepancies are. So I think that averages and trends are more meaningful. But thank you, Pat. That was very clear, wonderful presentation. I don't have any more questions.
Thanks, Jennifer. Pat, I have a couple of questions. So for people that are not going on the site, so as of today, to be in red, we have to be 25 or, you know, the cases or 10 positivity rate. So as of today, what are we now?
There's also a three-day lag. So I'm not on the site either right now. So for those people that are like, whoa, I wonder what it is right this moment, I would recommend they click on bloomfield.org and kind of take a look. And they can also put their cursor on the line and see how it's trended up since October 8th, and what the daily case rate has been, and the seven-day moving average as well.
Okay. And then, you know, just for clarity, and you mentioned it in the presentation, so we'd have to be either at 25 or 10, or, you know, at 25 or higher, or a 10 positivity rate for you to make a recommendation based on red for us to go fully remote, just for people to be clear.
Yeah. So David, can you pull that slide back up, please? Because I think it's important to revisit it one more time. All right. So President Colin, so we're looking at the seven-day moving average with a three-day lag. And so if we hit red in either category, percent positive or case rate, we'll have an emergency board of education meeting, likely for the next day. Students will continue to attend in person as scheduled on that day. And then, if the Board of Education makes the decision to pause in-person teaching and learning, this will be our transition plan. This transition plan has been shared with the district administrators, it's been shared with our teaching staff. All along, and I go back to, I think it was the June or July Board of Education meeting, we said all along, we had to plan for three things. We had to plan to continue with distance learning. We had to plan some type of hybrid approach to return to school. And we needed to plan for a full return. And those plans continue to take shape on a daily basis. And we're trying to make decisions based on the information that we have. And the information is continually changing. I can honestly say that almost every single district administrator and cabinet person since Monday morning has done nothing but work on COVID and COVID data. That has been every conversation, that has been almost every meeting, that is all we've been doing is looking at, where are we at? What is the data showing? What will the seven-day average potentially be at? How do we make sure we're prepared if we need to pause? How do we continue with what we're doing to make sure we can continue? And then down the road, if things improve, how can we look to find ways to still bring everyone back?
So Dave, can you go to that slide? Not this slide, the slide that shows that people, you know, and it may not be up to date, that, like, the number, and I think the number is somewhere at 22, and the positivity rate is like 8.5. Can you go to that slide so people can show? I think it's that one, or maybe next one. There's something I know on the dashboard that shows that number, and I think it was like around 22.
Right there.
And positively. Is that it? Oh, so in there, people go to bloomfield.org, they should be, all right, just for our community to know what number they're looking for.
Correct. And it typically pulls up, or the data refreshes around 6:00 PM every night. And so what they'll want to do is they'll want to take their cursor and toggle right up to here, so they can see the seven-day moving average. Up here,
And right now.
This is the daily, you know, what the daily total is, but we're looking at the seven-day moving average. So they'll click here, they'll see the seven-day moving average. They'll click down here, they'll see the seven-day moving average. Up here, they'll see the daily totals.
So the seven-day on this chart right now, if I look at it, it's like around a little above 21 or 22, and then the positivity rate is probably like seven or eight, if I look at the chart, you know. So, okay. And then, let's say we hit the 25 or the 10 and we go back. Is it, just to be clear again, we have to be 21 days in orange for us to go back to hybrid?
Correct. To consider to transition back. We've always used that verbiage because there's other factors that could come into play. You know, I've talked about numerous times, our difficulty with staffing. You know, we talked about that in our committee meeting with FFLA, and how difficult it is to get guest teachers, especially with other people, continuing with that. But yes, we would need those 21 consecutive days to consider a shift.
Okay. So, and then just finally, my question. So today, and I know people, because I know we're going into a closed meeting later, which we're going to, and has nothing to do with this. So today, there's no recommendation for us to go fully remote to the board?
No. If we hit red, let's say later today, we hit red, you know, I haven't looked for it today, then I will get ahold of you as board president. I will request an emergency board meeting for tomorrow. At that point, we'll discuss the latest metrics and how we're in red, with the recommendation that we pause temporarily and see if we get to orange for 21 days. None of this is fun decisions. You know, none of this is what we want for our children. You know, I'm like the people watching, I'm like you guys. I'm a parent of three children. This is not the education I signed up for. This is not the quality of care I want for my own child. So I get the frustration, you know, but when we put together the metrics, we were guided by what we knew and You know, but when we put together the metrics, we were guided by what we knew in August. And we relied on Harvard and their global research to put together a way to bring our students back as safely as possible. And we were one of the first to phase everyone back in pre-K through 12. And I think that's, and safely do it, mind you, and our mitigation efforts have worked. So while I'm, I'm hopeful we don't get to the point where we need to pause, I'm also realistic when the numbers continue to go up, that it might be inevitable.
Yeah, I, no, I got it. No, that's all you clarified it. Great presentation. Thanks, Pat. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, Jackie?
Um, no, I have no questions. Thank you.
Um, Howard?
No questions.
Okay, with that, we will go to general discussion. Uh, Lisa, just a quick presentation about our board intern policy.
Um, alright. Uh, the Policy Committee at the request of I think it was administration or maybe administration of the board, uh, revisited the intern board intern policy specifically regarding, um, remote meetings or, um, well, remote meetings. Um, we were asked to look at specifically, um, finding ways to incorporate the intern input um, in a way that was more organized and, um, so, sort of set some expectations and parameters. So we circulated, um, and upon pending board approval, we'll post um, some updates to the board intern policy. And by the way, we developed the policy, um, with the intent that it would grow as the program grew. It's brand-new program last year and we knew, um, going through it. Um, you know, we would have updates and we probably will next year down the road. Um, this is really unusual circumstances. So, um, one, one of the recommenda- the recommendation really that, that, um, is relevant is um, figuring out how to incorporate them in, a- and feedback into meetings on a regular basis. Um, will they read it with, um, the recommendation is to include them with other committee reports. So, uh, as you get reports from standing committees, you'll get reports from, um, one, one of two of our interns, um, however they decide to rotate it. And that's, that's the main change. Does anyone have any questions? Or actually, anyone from Policy Committee want to supplement or update? Howard or Jennifer? Did I miss something?
Howard, you're on mute.
Got it.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Um, I just wanted to mention, uh, over the last few weeks, we've made some typographical changes. Um, and matter of fact, I just saw another one in terms of the word year is misspelled. So, um, this is the old version, uh, without the updates. So if we could just, uh, make sure that before we actually finalize it and put it out for, uh, either in our policy manual or out to the public, that we have the most current version. It was, they were just typos and things like that and rearranging some words.
Thanks, Howard. Thanks, Lisa. Thanks, Jennifer, um, for your work regarding that. With that, we will move to public comment. So I just want to kind of just reiterate the public comment. Um, just, just some things that, you know, just need to be aware of. So, um, the Board of Education during public comment may not answer questions or make statements or commitments. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. Public comment will be limited to three minutes. One of my colleagues, Howard Baron, will be, um, timing the public comment that I read or people that are invited into the meeting. Complaints shall be first considered through proper channels before presenting to the Board of Education. The Board should not hear complaints at an open meeting about named district personnel unless the named person requests the Board to hear the complaint at an open session. Um, again, just wanted to reiterate, and then public comments limited to three minutes. With that, um, Dave, do we have anyone who, um, would like to speak at public comment?
We do not. Paul read.
All right. So first, since seven people are making decision for all families, it would be great if we could do things based on school. Lone Pine has the room, has the room for five days face-to-face. The rooms around the media center have movable walls. The classrooms can become bigger to accommodate six feet, even though the recommendation was three to six feet. If we do keep half-days, teachers should not be the ones cleaning the rooms. People should be hired to do that because teachers can do the work they need to do and have lunch. Then they have to add in Wednesday as instruction time instead of a, a joke of a day, especially for middle school kids. At Lone Pine, there are currently only two classes per grade. Maybe we can make them four classes per grade and hire more teachers. As one of the wealthiest school districts that just took out a bond based on school being face-to-face five full days. I think we can handle that. Also, why not take a vote? Let the people vote. Let parents decide that we want for our children. You board members do not have young children and have no idea how hard it is for the kids. You don't want one life sick on your he- on your, on your heads, but you're okay with children becoming depressed and be- and being held back academically. That's on you guys as well. I have five kids, four that were in the district. I pulled out my ninth grader and she went to private five full days. My second grader is on a waiting list and most likely will not be back for the 2021, 2022 year. My sixth and seventh graders are begging to go to school full-time and we are in the process of finding a school for them. And when my one-year-old is, is old enough to go back to school, he won't be going to a school that isn't looking for the welfare of the whole child. Thank you for me, thank you for meeting to review for current COVID 19, COVID data for our community. Purpose of this letter is to raise awareness of the implications of a shutdown for Bloomfield Wing Lake students. Unfortunately, the effects of a shutdown for Wing Lake students is not part of the public data are likely to receive. Wing Lake students have severe multiple physical impairments and civil, and serious medical concerns. Many of them, many of them have minimal ability to move their bodies. They rely on others for movement and bring life experiences for them in their wheelchairs. At Wing Lake, we provide superior nursing services, a hands-on education, participation in life vocational experiences with physical assistance as needed. An opportunity for socialization, physical, occupational, speech therapy, care love, and much more for our students with severance parents. During the COVID shutdown from March to September, five of our students passed away. This is absolutely heartbreaking and is not normal to lose that amount of students. We know from past experiences, over longer breaks from school, Christmas break, summer, et cetera, that many of these students would end up sick with pressure wounds or in the hospital for a variety of reasons. In addition, many of our students came back to school from the COVID-19, COVID shutdown with severe joint contractures, increased, uh, scoliosis with severe pain, regression in their motor skills, et cetera. Therefore, therefore, Wing Lake staff is extremely concerned that another shutdown, students will become, the majority of them lose the only community they have outside of their families when they're not able to attend school. Wing Lake has had zero cases of COVID being transmitted in the building. Our precautions and pro- and programming are working to prevent the spread of COVID. Please, please consider allowing Wing Lakers to continue receiving in-person instruction, therapy services and nursing services so we can keep our students safe and healthy. Wing Lake students need to be at school and Wing Lake staff want to be there to help them. Please let them know that this letter was received in time to be shared with all board members at tonight's meeting. I'm available to answer questions via email or phone. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. I know the, I know these are challenging times and the board is feeling pressure from every angle. And which is why it's important to look at facts, data science, and the success of other school systems in the era in other parts of the world. We know from many different scientific studies that schools do not seem to be a nexus for community outbreaks. Numbers from across the country have shown that even in states uh, countries with very high positivity rates, the rate of transmission, the rate of transmission of COVID, and schools with masks, mandates, and six-feet social distancing is very low. Locally, the total number of COVID infections in children remain in the minority as evidenced from the Oakland County website. Even in Germany and France, where they are beginning new lockdowns, they're keeping schools open, recognizing the fact that education is essential. We cannot overlook the worrisome rise in mental health issues. The effects of social isolation are very real. As a pediatrician, I see finished and emotional and mental toll. I see firsthand the emotional and mental toll quarantine has on children and parents. The mental health crisis has far surpassed the COVID infection at this point. Notwithstanding my personal and professional feelings above, I can appreciate the pressure the Bloomfield schools is under due to the closings of other districts in the area. But there are so many that remain open, full-time or hybrid. A fully virtual education is not much of an education for many of our students. Information coming out of places like Washington DC where they have been fully virtual indicates that all student groups have lost ground in general metrics. So I urge you to continue to give parents a choice to send their, send their child to school or keep the child at home. I hope we consider the hybrid option for our students at the very least. I hope Bloomfield schools can be a leader and set an example to other school districts that we can follow scientific data and continue to offer multiple safe options to our families. Is that it, Dave? If, oh, nope. Oakland County has updated the COVID risk level to red, the highest level on the spread contin- and the spread continues to increase. Which specific metrics will be used to decide on going fully virtual? What is the metric source and what are the Excel thresholds for each grade school? Why is BH staying within person variations when West Bloomfield has decided to stay safe and go virtual? Who will be held accountable to pay medical bills for families impacting from contracting COVID at school and at the burdens placed for the families? Why is this fair? When will a new survey come out to parents who opted for in-person learning? It is obvious that concessions may need to be made by these parents. A survey would help understand the comfort level of parents in regards to going back five full days. We, we now understand there are different constraints like busing, spacing of students, lunch monitors, et cetera. A new survey would help determine where parents can help alleviate the constraints of the schools and help mold a plan which, when it is ready to go back full-time. I heard one of the constraints is virtual teachers. We cannot open the virtual academy up for new students because there are not, because there are not enough teachers. Can we hire teachers outside of the district to help this constraint? Technically, they can be teaching from anywhere. Oakland County has declared the COVID risk level red. If this is used in decision-making, why are we ignoring it? What are the exact metrics and from what source determine are we in red status?
That's it, Paul. That's the last one.
That's okay. I can figure it out. Uh, board business. So we have one motion. Um, can somebody make a motion?
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the, uh, recommendations of the Policy Committee to amend the student intern policy as attached. Sorry, let me amend that again. Now it is attached as will be forthcoming with the typos and other, uh, corrections that trustee Behren has noted fixed. Want me to reword it?
You, you beat me to it, Lisa. Thank you.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, Mark?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Motion passes 6-0. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move the Board of Education convene a closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, subpart 8C regarding collective bargaining strategy as requested by Kelly Bowles.
Second.
Okay, um, Howard?
I just, can we have a brief discussion just for a second? Uh, can we just be clear to anyone that might be watching that uh, what, if we come back on, uh, the record in a public meeting, i- it's just to adjourn publicly, but that we have no more board business to discuss afterwards in case they don't want to wait around?
Correct. Thank you, Lisa. Any other discussion?
Uh, nor- normally what we do is we just say, we're going to be going into closed session and will not be, uh, reconvening.
Okay. With that, Howard?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Okay, we're going to close this and I will see you all in closed session. Thanks, everybody.